Bring this meeting of the Alexander County Board of Commissioners to order. It is June 4th, 2012. I'd like to call on Vice Chairman Berkey Jennings to lead us into invocation and then Commissioner Darrell Robertson in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand.
All right.
Loving Heavenly Father, we come to you this hour asking for your blessing and help as we gather our, as we are gathered together. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Give us the desire to find ways to excel in our work. Help us to work together, encourage each other to work with excellence. We ask that you would challenge each other to reach higher and further to be the best we can. We ask this in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners report. Is there any commissioner that would like to report anything? No one? Okay. You have the agenda in front of you. I would like to propose that we add item 8A, some surplus items from the Sheriff's Department, and that we should strike item number six. We will come back and revisit that at the next meeting. I'll make that in the form of a motion.
A second.
Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. First item on the agenda is a public comment. Jamie, has anyone signed up to speak? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? Okay. We will move on to item number two, public hearing. The 2012-2013 Proposed Alexander County Budget. I'll call on Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The proposed 2012-2013 budget for Alexander County General Fund is $31,380,390. The proposed budget includes no tax increase. 2012-2013 proposed budget is 4% more than the current budget, or $1.4 million more. As a big part of that, the new Alexander County Law Enforcement and Detention Center, which should be open by November 2012 and cost $8.5 million to construct, will cost nearly $500,000 more to operate than the existing jail during the fiscal year. The proposed budget basically appropriates funding to operate the current jail for six months and the new jail for six months. The new detention facility, designed by Hemp Hill Randall Associates, is modeled after the Ash County Detention Center, which was completed nearly two years ago and currently costs $1.6 million to operate. The Ash County facility has 164 beds, the same as Alexander County's new facility. Same design, same architect. The Ash County facility operates with 19 employees. 10 new employees are proposed for the Alexander County facility and with the existing nine that we have, it brings our total to 19. The new facility will cost more to operate, from medical to meals, however, to offset the cost of operating the jail, we will house inmates from other counties as well as state programs in hopes of generating $500,000 in revenue. Alexander County will also save on transporting inmates back and forth from Caldwell and Ash Counties. Nearly $400,000 is budgeted in the current budget, 2011-2012, to house inmates in other counties, and around 50% of that should be saved for half a year by not transporting them outside the county. Our current detention facility has 26 beds and we have nine employees plus part-time employees, and we also are currently transporting inmates to Caldwell and Ash Counties. Our new detention facility has 164 beds. It'll have 19 employees like Ash County and will be transporting inmates to other, we will not be transporting inmates to other counties. We'll have more operational costs, but we should have offsetting revenue from other counties and state programs. It is important to note that inmates will have to be transported from the new detention facility to the courthouse. The budget for the new facility proposed by the county manager and reviewed at the May 28, 2012 work session is $1,611,597. There are still some unresolved items in the new facility, such as furniture, and we're currently getting cost estimates, but they may not be available at the time of adoption of the current budget. The budget proposed by the Sheriff's Department to operate the new jail facility for the 2012-2013 fiscal year was $3,405,890. The proposal included 32 employees to operate the facility, 23 of which would be new positions. And also, in the whole overall scheme of things, in the project, courthouse renovations would start in 2013. Moving on to other departments, the Rocky Face Mountain Recreation Area opened on May 25, 2012. The park operates seven days a week. Two new full-time positions are proposed to operate the park. One full-time position is on hold. Three part-time positions are also included. The park property is over 300 acres with hiking trails and picnic facilities. Paid staff is necessary for safety purposes. The proposed budget for Rocky Face Park is $169,925. Alexander County staffs the Office of Economic Development. The proposed budget reinstates the second position in this department that will work with small businesses and on special economic development projects as directed by the Economic Development Director. The budget proposed is $155,037. One county staff addition is requested at the Alexander County Senior Center. This position will handle activities at the center, work in the communities, and serve as an assistant to the director. The proposed budget for the senior center is $157,173. Four new vehicles are in the budget for the Sheriff's Department at a proposed cost of $133,260. One new replacement ambulance is also proposed for $126,700. The proposed budget also includes converting 10 county vehicles to propane gas in an effort to save money. All in all, there are 11, there are net 11 new positions in the budget. Alexander County will offer a retirement incentive, incentive for full-time employees who are eligible to retire as of July 1st of this year, 2012. Alexander County will require the employees to retire before January 1st, 2013 to be eligible. A 5% incentive will be paid by the county. Funds are budgeted to renovate the Alexander County Animal Shelter in the amount of $125,000. The shelter was opened in 2002. The only increases in the budget are as follows. A 5% water rate increase is proposed to offset an increase from the city of Hickory, and a small fire tax increase is proposed by the Vashti Fire Department. The increase would be taking the rate from 4.9 cents to 5.8 cents. That's 0.58 from 0.49. There are no increases in landfill fees, inspection fees, or any other fees. County staff is still working on several unresolved issues which will have minimal impact on the budget, including transportation, furniture, and some other equipment for the new law enforcement and detention facility, economic development, capital costs associated with the renovation of the Alexander County courthouse. The budget ordinance will be considered and presented at our June 18 meeting, and also I'd like to point out for the board and staff that Jennifer Herman, our finance director, is here tonight, and want to thank her and her staff for all their work on the budget, and I'll be glad to try to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Do any of the commissioners have any questions? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who has any questions or would like to comment? Okay.
Mr. Chairman. Excuse me. I will try to talk. I want to thank the county manager, county finance officer, finance staff, and all the departments for working together to get information in, to get the budget put together in a timely manner, and I'd also like to thank our county employees for being conscientious of cost for the last several years, which has helped to keep expenditures down, which helps control the budget.
And I would agree with Commissioner Robertson. I know what a good job he and Commissioner Jennings and our county manager and all the department heads, they've been involved with the Finance Committee. They've been with this budget from the beginning, and I know they've put a lot of hard work into this and want to thank all of them and all the county employees for everything that they do to try to save money for the taxpayers of this county. Anyone else? All right, we'll go on to item number three on the agenda, which is public hearing. I'm sorry. Yep. We have, we're in a public hearing. I propose that we close the public hearing. Make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Item number three on the agenda is public hearing, conditional use permit 12-1. White, call on Seth Harris, County Planner.
Thank you, sir. This is conditional use permit 12-1. The applicant, Jimmy White, is proposing an off-road vehicle membership organization to be located off of Three Forks Church Road, consisting of 52.36 acres. The current land use is vacant, however, Mr. White does hold events throughout the year on this property now. Existing zoning is RA-20, residential agricultural, and all the surrounding zonings within 100 feet is also RA-20. Land uses within 100 feet include, to the north, vacant property; to the south, the Lower Little River, more vacant property and agricultural land; to the east is vacant and agricultural land; and to the west is single-family residential use and agricultural Some background on the property. Tax office records indicate that Mr. White acquired the subject property in 1994. Mr. White has allowed friends and family to ride motorcycles and off-road vehicles on the subject property for several years.
Seth, let me ask you a question about that.
Yes, sir.
How, and I intend to ask Mr. White the same question. How long has he been operating this as a venue for off-road vehicles and motorcycles?
I could see trails on the property on aerial photos from the 90s, but as far as the actual use, I don't have any records indicating that, but Mr. White is here tonight and can answer that question for you?
Okay.
Okay. Mr. White does request that users of his property make donations in order to facilitate trail creation and maintenance. And Mr. White is a member of the North Carolina Hair Scramblers Association, a group which sanctions off-road motorcycle races and sponsors several events in Alexander County. However, Mr. White does not currently hold sanctioned events on the subject property. The RA-20 zoning district does allow membership organizations with conditional use approval from the Board of County Commissioners. The proposed membership organization will hold events up to eight times per year. Member events will be limited to weekends. Event hours will be from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Saturdays and 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Sundays. Events will be limited to 40 members per event. If you're curious where that information comes from, that's what Mr. White placed on the application when he turned the application in. These are conditions that he has agreed to. Existing riding trails extend beyond the boundary of the subject property. Natural buffers between the current use and adjacent property owners exist, however, several trails are in close proximity to property lines. A camper and various storage buildings do currently exist on the property. Per standard procedure, letters were sent by first-class mail to property owners within 100 feet of the subject property. A sign was posted at the property and a legal advertisement was placed in the Taylorville Times. Staff has received one call in favor of the request and three calls against the request. Some of the concerns of those calls were the right-of-way accessing the property and also destruction of property along that right-of-way going into the use. The ordinance requirements.
Seth.
Yes, sir.
Is, does Mr. White have a deeded right-of-way into this property?
He does have a deeded right-of-way to this property.
And what is the width of it?
Don't have that in front of me. I'm thinking it's 30 feet, but I'm not 100% sure.
Okay.
But there is a deeded right-of-way to this property. Ordinance requirements state that in granting a conditional use permit, the county commissioner shall find that. The application meets all the regulations in the zoning district in which it is proposed. Membership organizations and their related activities are allowed in the RA-20 zoning district. Overnight camping for members of the organization will require additional approval from the Board. The second one, the use for which the conditional use permits is sought will not adversely affect the health or safety of persons residing or working in the neighborhood of the proposed use, and the commissioners must determine what effect the proposed use will have upon the neighborhood. Finally, the use will not be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to property or public improvements in the neighborhood. And again, the commissioners must determine the impact to property and on public improvements in the neighborhood. Staff does recommend approval of the conditional use permit with the following conditions. First, events held on the subject property shall be limited to members of the membership organization. Second, the membership organization shall hold a maximum of eight events per calendar year. Third, events shall be limited to a maximum of 40 members. Four, events shall be limited to the hours of 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Saturdays and 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Sundays. Five, activities of the membership organization shall be confined to the subject property. Six, any new trails must be a minimum of 10 feet from adjacent property lines. And seven, overnight camping shall not be allowed on the subject property without additional conditional use approval from the Board of County Commissioners.
Anyone have any questions?
I got a couple. Seth, does this membership organization exist, or is this something that will be created?
This is something that will be created. To give a little more history on this, we received a complaint last year concerning the activities on the property. I investigated it, went to the property, talked to Mr. White, and we resolved the problem. Staff resolved the problem. County attorney was contacted by the complainant, and this membership organization is a final solution that we came to, to satisfy the complaint.
You say the membership organization, "we," is that you and the owner or county attorney looked at?
The county attorney, the county manager, and myself.
At this time, number seven, he has not asked for a conditional use permit.
He has not, and the only reason I had that in there is there is the camper that exists on the property. I'm not sure what the use of it is for, but I thought, you think of these types of uses, you think of people staying overnight and using it for a couple, for the weekend, so I added that one in there.
Okay.
Seth, where is the right-of-way going into the property and also how, how is the trails located on the property as well?
If you look in the upper right-hand corner where the property comes to a peak, you'll see a road coming across a field there. The entrance is at the top of that peak there, coming in. You come down the trail there, and that's where the trails really begin, and they branch off from there. If you look a little further south down the field, you see some white blobs, it looks like. That's the camper and accessory building. And if you look all to the south, it's kind of hard to see on this screen, but there are trails all through these woods and actually on the property to the right and also the property to the north. However, this membership organization would be confined to the subject property.
Another question, it says in your background in the discussion write-up, the existing riding trails extend beyond the boundary of the subject property.
Yes, sir.
How is Mr. White going to address the fact that he's got trails going into other people's property? Then you're going to have boundary lines that will contain it within the property.
Right. The use, the membership organization would be confined to the subject property. The trails he uses now go beyond the subject property, so I'm not sure how Mr. White is going to address that. To, to honestly, you'd have to have the applicants, excuse me, the adjoining property owners would also have to be applicants on this conditional use to allow this membership organization to go beyond the subject property, and that, that didn't happen, so.
So he's going to have to relocate trails?
It sounds like it. Yes, sir.
Well, that's not what the information we have says. It says there are trails on adjoining property, and then it says new trails must be a minimum of 10 feet from adjacent property lines. I don't see any words about relocating trails that are not on.
It doesn't say that, and I don't think it's our place to tell him to relocate trails, but the activities of the membership, if the membership organization has an event and they ride onto adjacent properties and the conditional use is approved tonight, it would be a violation of that conditional use, and that could be revoked, and the membership organization will no longer be allowed to ride anywhere.
What about responsibility for things like compliance? I know it's, the property comes down to the, well, joins the river. Who's going to be responsible for compliance with DNR requirements, runoff, dust, that kind of thing?
That would be the property owner.
And without having, is that committed to anywhere?
It's not, no. We can add that as a condition, though.
Do any of those trails go down to the river or cross the river?
It appeared like it on aerial photo, but.
What, what about liability as far as if somebody gets hurt while they're riding? Who's responsible?
Mr. White, from what I've been told, has a form that he has, a waiver form he has people sign when they ride that property. That takes any responsibility for accidents away from him as the property owner.
Has that been looked at? Does that?
No, sir.
Mean anything?
Without asking the county attorney, I honestly don't know.
Do you know what the objections were to the three that called? I mean, why they objected?
One concern was the right-of-way coming into the property and destruction of the property along that right-of-way. It is a shared right-of-way to a couple of properties. No, the complaint was just general disrespect for the use of the land, basically.
Are there any planned improvements by Mr. White on the right-of-way?
He hasn't mentioned any. That could also be a condition. There are also concerns that, of course, this may expand beyond what he's applying for and that we're addressing the events here, but there are also concerns about daily activities, riding every weekend, that sort of thing, so.
Right now, the application is only for riding on Saturdays and Sundays and not during the week?
Correct, yes, sir.
Did you have any discussions about prohibitions of riding during the week?
We can add that as a condition too, if you'd like. I mean, it does limit it to Saturdays and Sundays, but we could add that, clarify that if you'd like. I think it pretty much covers it. It does say shall be limited to the hours of 9:00 a.m. It pretty much limits it, limits it, yes, to Saturdays and Sundays.
And the, the membership organization will monitor this, or you'll monitor it, or who who makes sure things stay in compliance?
It would have to be complaint-based. I mean, the membership organization should monitor it, but I may not know until I get a complaint.
Could we make as a condition of the conditional use that inspection be allowed at any time to ensure compliance with local, state, and federal regulations?
Sure. Well, what kind of local, state regulations are we talking about now?
Well, like DNR, water.
Okay.
All these items that are on this conditional use are going to be local regulations.
Has anybody looked at DNR, Environment Natural Resources requirements and how this complies or doesn't comply with that?
No, sir.
I think with the stream involved, you know, that I don't think you'd have any choice except to do that, mainly because, I mean, hey, if you've got to keep, if you've got to keep cows and everything out there, the way they put such restrictions on them, making people fence out to keep cows out of streams and everything, and the way they wanted to pass these regulations on dust and everything to keep the dust in from getting into our water supplies, which is coming, I mean, you know, there's, there's issues there. My major concern is two things, is number one, how it will affect the water supply of the Lower Little River, which I think is something that we need to make sure that we maintain to have a clean water supply for those folks that may use that water. And the other thing is the noise. Even though you're going to do it on Saturday and, and Sunday, I think it still needs, the noise will need to be held down and make sure that there's buffers around the property to ensure that the noise level does not exceed the decibel that is considered to be detrimental to those folks that'll be around there listening to this noise. I think these folks need to have the opportunity in their neighborhoods to be able to enjoy their life without the interference of motorcycles and all that stuff, make sure that the buffers are properly around it to, to ensure that that happens. That's, that's my two major concerns.
Well, and with DNR, there's another concern too, coming back out on the road. If it rains, I can't imagine the requirements being any different from construction. You can't run a truck with muddy tires back out on the road, and who's going to look after that? I mean, that goes in same, another chapter with the.
Another chapter with DNR, yeah. It's just one of those things you have to look at because of the, you know, the results of the way that the laws have been passed down to make sure all these things are covered so that we won't have a, a problem, so.
Commissioner Yoder, I concur in the noise. Having had the experience of living in close proximity to the Pine Valley Speedway, which was a go-kart track for about 20 years, and they would run until 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the morning on the weekends, it wasn't a pleasant experience. So natural buffers to cut down on the noise to whatever decibel level is applicable needs to really be spelled out in this thing.
Well, and my understanding, I've received a few phone calls about this, that Mr. White's been doing this since 1994 or thereabout, so I don't think it's changing so much what has been done traditionally on the property. It's just opening it up to a few more people. Mr. White, can you come up and maybe answer a few questions? I've just got one. It talks about having, opening it up for Saturdays and Sundays. Do you plan on having any two-day events out there? Is that a possibility right now?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. What we do and what we have been doing for the past, ever since we've been open, this is no cost to come in here, it is absolutely free. If you feel led to put a donation, that's up to you. But what we. But what we do is have these, as you call them, events, we call them fun days. And it's only a minimum of people invited because we don't open it up completely to the public. It's open to North Carolina Horse and Scramble Association members and their families or whatever. That's the only place we advertise. We don't advertise in any public advertisement of any kind. And we've held these things on Saturday and Sunday consecutively. And last year, I tried to have ten, that was way too many. Yeah, I just couldn't look at it because we race with that association too, so it was way too much. Now, me and my family and close friends, we may ride every other weekend there, but it's not open to everybody else. It's just us. And if you will see, the land is very wooded. So, therefore, your noise factor, I can stand in the very tip-top where we park, which is, you see the very small, uh, place to park. You can't park many vehicles in that area. Then, see, it's very small compared to the fifty-two acres. All right, that mean we can't hold many people.
Right.
And, and I do not get on the adjacent property to my right, and, uh, that is owned also by Mr. Terry White. And we do not get on his property now. We used two years ago because his dad and my dad owned the property. That's why the old existing trails were there. But if you'll stand in the top peak up there where the parking lot is, and once the bikes get down into the woods, you can't even hear them. You think they stopped riding. We cross no creeks. We do get right up close to the river, and that is a flood plain. So, in a wet season, you can't even go down there. So, that property is, is useless as far as anything for that matter, according to y'all.
Mr. White, uh.
Yes, sir.
The question I was asking, Seth, you do not ride now on adjacent property?
Uh, yes, sir, I do. The north property is a, across the little road right there at the peak. That is owned by Mr. Kemp Watts. Mr. Watts has given me permission to ride on his property. All the other properties I have now moved completely off of, including Mr. White's, which is right beside of me. We did years ago, and we did what we really call a boundary line property, but I have moved off the boundary line to where I am not on his property no more.
Seth, I need to ask you this question. Does that property owner have to be part of this conditional use application if riding is going to be done on his property?
Yes, sir.
And it currently is not.
Is not correct.
So, we need, that would be a revision that needs to be made to this application, is it not?
Correct.
Do you plan to continue to ride on that property to the north?
If y'all say no, we won't.
What would be easier for you? To reapply with that property included in the application or not ride on that property?
That's.
It's up to you.
The riding on that property is extremely tight. There's, it's, um, we don't do any machinery work on his property because I don't own that. So, what we done was just real small little trails, and a lot of people don't go on that side because of that. Uh, my, my trails, uh, for the most part are about, um, five to six foot wide, and some of them are a lot less. And of course, we've had to do provisions as far as EPA. I made some silt places so that the water wouldn't wash away, you know, certain places. And I'd say we do not cross any creeks. And you see that, just trails like that right there. Now, you see kind of where it's washing down that road. On down there, we have places fixed to where it will cut the water in different directions uh, so that the, the washing will be minimal.
Yeah, silt fences?
We don't have fences, we have pits.
Uh, going back to the, the question about riding on adjacent property.
Yes, sir.
This conditional use permit is to ask us for permission to approve your application, which would be on your property.
Yes, sir.
Not anyone else's property.
Yes, sir.
So, would you like for us to have this conditional use permit approved for your property only or for the adjacent property that you ride on?
Well, I would like for mine because, uh, Mr. Watts may say tomorrow, you're not going to ride on my property anymore. I mean, we like to use his property, but, you know, we don't pay any rent on it, and he could come up and tell me that's no longer I could ride there, so that means that would be for not then.
Seth, I think we need to change this to make sure that it's only on Mr. White's property. We specify that.
It is specified in the conditions.
Yeah, there's nothing that says any different.
No, it doesn't in the conditions. In the condition, it says new trails must be a minimum.
That's right.
It doesn't say anything about the existing trails.
I'm sorry, you're correct.
Uh, you mentioned that you talked to, uh, EPA. Have you had Department of Environment Natural Resources out there and looked at this as far as runoff and protection?
No, sir. I just, uh, when we, we, as I've been to other places, I saw how things would erode and stuff, so we done some of this on our own. And being as I don't cross any creeks no more, then, uh, they have not come out and looked at mine. Uh, I have talked to one, and he said it's private property, and I said, yes. And he asked me about, and sometimes people get confused, events. The only event we have is you just come out and ride. There is no organization to it.
Where was the gentleman from that you talked to?
I'm not sure now. That's been quite some time. And he told me that, uh, it was pri- property, it probably wouldn't need nothing to come out there. But now, that's been several years back.
I have never had them say they wouldn't come out, but.
Well.
Uh, when you got streams and streets involved.
Well, I'm not on those streams. The river in the back, and we don't cross the river.
It doesn't matter if you cross it. Water comes off, would water come off your property into the river?
Well, you know.
You said you got a flood plain down there, so evidently it does.
Yeah, a heavy rain was.
Yeah.
Um, do you do, uh, would you be adverse to putting a sign out a week ahead of time to just kind of let the neighbors know that you would be holding an event that week? I think that'd be, uh, you know, the neighborly thing to do as well.
And as far as keeping up the right-of-way, I'm the only one that does.
Right.
Nobody else does. The other users of the property don't do anything because there's no one that lives on that right-of-way.
Uh, Seth, the aerial photo that we were looking at earlier, I assume that is, uh, was taken in winter time? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Early spring before the leaves came on. Just to clarify, number five in the conditions does state that activities of the membership organization shall be confined to the subject property?
Well, I, what I'm trying, the point I'm trying to make is to make sure that the word, it was covered, he's covered as far as no riding on anybody else's property except his own, whether it's an event or what, an event, or whether existing trails that are there.
I don't know that we can prevent anybody from riding motorcycles on adjacent property at all. I mean, we can tell the membership organization, you can only ride here, but I'm not sure that individuals that come to his, his land, that his friends and family, I'm not sure that we can tell them that they can't ride.
I know how. I would do it on my adjacent property.
I think conditional use permit would be for this property. If anybody's off of it, they're trespassing.
That's right. They can't ride.
Okay. I, I'm thinking the membership organization, the members of the membership organization and events.
And I, I do have a concern that we're talking about a membership organization, volunteer memberships, and they contribute if they want to. But if we approve this, and then we get mud down in the river, or we get mud out on the road, then we have, uh, opened up a can of worms that should be looked at before, uh, this is done rather than after. That's, that's my concern.
Any other questions?
Anybody else?
Uh, this is a public hearing. Is there, um, if, if you would, just give me a show of hands. How many people are here to, uh, in support of this? Against this? Okay, um, if you would, please, if you want to speak, please limit it to three or four minutes. You can come up and make a statement. Please state your name and your address. Does anyone like to speak?
Well, I'd like to, but I don't. Uh, I'm Jimmy's cousin. Uh, my name's Terry. I own the property that's adjoining to that, that says White directly beside it.
Yeah.
Uh, I have, I have nothing against Jimmy and his family riding, but I do have some problems with other people riding. Uh, I've had that from the beginning. Jimmy told me that it would be he and his family. I didn't have any problems. They rode on my property, no problems. And it took several conversations before he stopped riding completely. And the reason I didn't want him riding is the liability that's involved with somebody riding and getting hurt. Now, he has had one person get hurt there, and that's his son, who is here tonight.
Mr. White, may I interject and ask a question?
I'm sorry?
May I ask a question?
Sure, sure.
When you're talking about someone was injured on your property?
No. I told him somebody was going to get hurt on the property while he was riding on my property, and I asked him to stop, which he eventually did, as he stated. And I appreciated that because I don't want any liabilities.
But people were riding on your property?
My property, correct. And it, at that time, it wasn't hardly as well-guarded against people coming in. And people can come in off the Three Forks Road, across the Watts property, straight down into our property, his property, and there's, there's no way to keep them out. Uh, I don't really like that. And I had a question about, uh, I think, as Seth read, maybe that with this, with this, uh, where you, where you are a member, the membership group, that maybe they would spend the night. I am totally against that. Open fires, we are totally against that. No open fires whatsoever. Would I even think about having on my property, much less anybody else's around that, just come in and camp? I'm not for that. I don't want that to happen. And I would not, I'm surprised Jimmy would, I'm very surprised Jimmy that you would want that. Jimmy doesn't live there. He lives in Hickory. There is a lot of noise on a motorcycle, and this is going to get worse and worse and worse. If Jimmy and his family want to ride on his property, hallelujah, it's his property. Have a great time. But when you start bringing anybody else that wants to come and start drinking and cavorting about, which will come, and people with, that have off-road motorcycles like to saw their mufflers off or to something to that extent, I'm totally against that. Because I don't live there. You guys can laugh if you want to, but it happens. They don't, Jimmy doesn't live there. I don't even live there. I live down the road on the Zeb Watts Road. I can hear these motorcycles real plain, but they don't bother me. But you can hear them. So, if you're going to allow him to do it, then protect the people that live there, please.
Do you share that right-of-way?
I do. Do I help keep the right-of-way up? Not really. Uh, I don't, he's the one that does all the traveling on it, him and his people. There's some farmers that go in there, but I'm, I'm not for having mud in the road. I agree with you. Do whatever it takes to get it out, but they do the biggest part of the traveling.
Now, the riding that's done now, is it done more than, during the weekend?
No, mainly from what I know, it's done on the weekend. And, uh, uh, you know, the biggest problem with that is Sunday. I'm sure everyone of y'all like a Sunday evening nap. Howdy, would you like a motorcycle in your backyard while you're Sunday eating that? So, the quietness is an issue.
I empathize with that because of what I said about the Pine Valley Speedway.
Well, this, this Three Forks Road that you see there is a little bit deceptive uh, to the fact that it's not far from across the Watts property to other people that live right in there. Different ones. The Childers people are real close. I don't know if they care or not, but I, I feel like that people need to have a, a place to ride motorcycles if you want to ride, but it needs to be considered the neighbors if they want to sleep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry, Jimmy.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
I've been over to Jimmy's place every.
Come up, if you don't mind, come up to the microphone and state your name and your address.
My name's Chad Hefner. Uh, my boy Hayden, he rides, uh, NCHSA stuff too. Uh, we've been over to Jimmy's place numerous times. Jimmy's always there looking after the place. Jimmy's got a place where kids can come and ride and have a good time. And if you ain't got somewhere for kids to go ride and have a good time, I mean, what else could a kid get into? Motorcycles keep kids out of trouble. Motorcycles are, uh, I mean, they're, it's a, it's kind of a close-knit community. There's a lot of good people that rides motorcycles, and they're respectful, and they're not out to saw their mufflers off to be loud. You know, Jimmy don't cross the river. He's, uh, got silt ponds for runoff. Uh, anything down at the river that would runoff anyway goes into, but run right down into that sand, you know, and filter through that anyway, which is at a very minimum because it's just one trail that even runs down through there, right? I mean, it's really nothing. I'm in favor of Jimmy's thing there. I mean, we all need a place to ride, and there's getting fewer and fewer places to ride. And, uh, I mean, Jimmy's doing a good thing. We need to keep it open.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
My name's Lance White, and I'm the future landowner of what you're seeing there. As Mr. White mentioned, um, I was the one that had an accident about a year ago and just about lost my life on that land. But, you know, I think it's a sad day when someone comes up and tells another man that he can't do something on his land. And at this point, we have done nothing wrong. We have not broken any laws. We are not out there drinking. We are not out there sleeping, spending the night through the week. We are enjoying the land, and we're enjoying a hobby that we all love. And like I said, at the point that a man tells another man that he can't do something on his land, then I think, I think we've dipped into some constitutional rights. So, you know, I would like to ask the board if they've ever, you know, gone to their kitchen to get something to eat. If you've got something to drink, would we call that a restaurant? No, you call it your kitchen. We call this our private property to come and ride. So, when someone says that we can't do that, then we do have a, we do have an issue. And, you know, it's, it's a shame that, that we even have to come to this point. I, I, you know, I'm, I'm just looking at my dad, and he goes out there on some weekends, and he's genuinely having fun letting people like this gentleman just mentioned come over and ride. We're not charging anybody. We're not asking anybody to give us any money. We're not ripping down through the road and bringing out dirt any more than the tractors that are coming up and down that road are bringing out on the road. So, if we're going to talk about mud on the roads, we live in an agricultural county, then I guess we're going to start talking about a lot more than just motorcycle areas to ride. So, you know, I asked the board, in as much respect as I can, because that land means a lot to me. It means a lot to my family. You can go back and look at the records. It's been in our family either on my dad's side or on the other side for over a hundred years. This land has been in our, uh, family. And now, we're being questioned. We can't come and ride. My son is also in the, in, um, sitting here, and now he's riding. My nephews. My nephews. Um, it, it's just a, it's just a sad day when someone tells me that I can't do something um, that I've been doing for, for twenty, thirty years. So, we can call it, we can call it a, you know, a membership club. You can call it whatever you want, but I, I remember a quote from President Abraham Lincoln, and he asked, he asked, um, you know, how many legs does a dog have if you call his, uh, tail a leg? And he answered, "Four," because calling the tail a leg doesn't make it a leg. So, you can stand out here, and Mr. White can tell us that we're sawing off pipes, and we're, we're out there sleeping and drinking and carrying on and bringing out a bunch of mud onto the road, but that's not what we're doing. We're out there fellowshipping, no different than what you do when you go home and you have a church meeting, and you have a bunch of people come over to your house, and you have a cookout. Are we gonna start talking about cookouts and saying that that's a restaurant? And start having a, you know, a meeting about that? I don't think so. We're not doing anything that's hurting anybody, and no one's ever complained until now. And the reason why they complain is, is because of greed. There's a, a recreational park that's not making as much money as he wants to make? So, he points fingers. So, I don't have anything else to say, other than, you know, I'm here to support my family, to support my dad, and someday that will be my land, and I will be riding on it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, no greed here. And there has been complaints, this ain't the first time.
My name's Eddie Branick. I'm a friend of the family, been a friend of, uh, Todd's, uh, oh, I'm sorry, Jimmy's daughter since high school, and her husband Todd. Um, I've been riding at the land for several years, uh, with Jimmy's permission, at the events, whatever you wanna call them. As far as the noise goes, I can, to, to meet your concern, uh, when you're in the parking lot, and there are twenty bikes, let's say, if there are that many, which I've never seen that many bikes there, when they get down toward, toward the riverside or down toward the bottom, you can't hear them. You can't hear them. When my son rides, my wife's here, my, my son, I ride, my son rides, my daughter rides, and we ride because of Jimmy. And when you get down there, you can't hear them. We have to send somebody out. Hey, where's Eddie? Haven't seen him in a while. I don't know. Do you hear him? No, we don't hear him. Nobody's sawing off pipes. Nobody saws a pipe off a motorcycle. I mean, back in the day, when you'd make a- I echo everything that Lance says. I mean, it's, it's a very emotional issue to tell somebody you can't do something on their land for whatever reasons they have. Um, as far as the trails go, Jimmy maintains the trails. He says, "You ride here, people ride here." If people go off of where Jimmy White says they can ride, then they don't come back. They're not invited. There's, it's, it's black and white. The trails are marked. This is an arrow. This is where the trail goes. This is where you go. If you don't follow the arrows, you don't follow the trail, you don't ride there. Because those are the rules that are set forth, and the people we ride with, the people that ride at the NCHSA, who ride, that's third thing, that some people fish, some people hunt, these people ride motorcycles. So, we know how precious it is to have a place to ride, because it is something that not a lot of people do, and a lot of people don't want to do it. But here's a place, you don't go out there and you show yourself to jeopardize it. Nobody's out gallivanting around. When we go out there and have an event, and they do camp out, we're out there with our kids. You know, we're having cookouts, we're cooking hot dogs and hamburgers, the kids are playing in the field. Nobody's drinking, nobody's hollering, nobody's shooting guns in the air. So, and I don't know where that, you know, I, I, I would send my children out there. I've had friends with their children out there, anytime, whether I'm there or not, because the people that are out there are responsible. They do what they're told, they know how precious it is, and they're not gonna jeopardize it. I've never seen a muddy tire mark on the road coming out of the right-of-way. Jimmy maintains that. I'm trying to think of anything, or what else that Lance was saying. As far as riding, like I say, uh, riding on other people's property, you tell us where people can ride, and that's what they'll ride. You tell them to stay off of it, and they'll stay off of it. As far as that form goes, that, you know, you talked about earlier, uh, Jimmy has the same people, sign the same form that every race and event I've ever been to. GNCC, which is the National, Grand National Cross-Country Championships, that's what you see in the magazines, the same form that the man that owns the riding organization down the road, that raised the first issue, the same form that you sign when you go race on NCHSA event. Jimmy has those signed. And everybody that shows up takes responsibility. You, you know, if, if, if you're gonna go out and you're going to endeavor in something like riding a motorcycle, then most people are responsible enough to understand that, you know, there's a risk involved with that, just like the other risky activities. You're gonna skydive, you're gonna sign a form. You know, if you get hurt, and you get hurt, you take responsibility for it. And I don't know that anybody's never done anything different. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
How y'all doing? My name's Todd Lell, thirty-two, White Farm Lane. I was fortunate enough to get into this family back about nineteen ninety, ninety-one. This has been the best bunch of people. And what's gone over here for years is, like everybody else has said, I mean, y'all got friends, you got friends you go play golf with? Hey, bro, you wanna come over and let's go play golf? I, I don't see this any different. And, you know, the, the road issue, the noise issue, Three Forks Church Road is a couple miles up the road. We never cranked a motorcycle on Sunday till twelve o'clock, out of the respect of that church. I'm a member of that church. I respect everybody at that church. That's been a rule since the beginning. There's a club, another club that brought this whole issue up, up in Poplar. There's a church Poplar a half mile down the road, and they're riding at seven o'clock in the morning. So, what I'm saying is, we wouldn't be here right now if it wasn't for Brushy Mountain Motorsports. I know that's not an issue to any of y'all, but he has got a problem thinking that we are taking his money, and we're not. We've got fifty-two acres. He's got fourteen or fifteen hundred acres up there. And I realize he has got a lot invested. He's went through EPA, he's went through y'all, he went over to Coles, he's built bathrooms and everything, but he's running a business. We're not. All we're doing is getting together and riding. And these friends, so-called friends, I mean, yesterday, we were down in Denver racing motorcycles. Twenty or thirty of us, we all parked together. That's our friends. So, if you can't have friends come to your own property and the sawing the mufflers off and the stuff, and that's went on for years. That's gonna go on, that's like, that's what, that's the way neighbors are. I can't say a lot of people get along with most of their neighbors. We try, but sometimes that slips through the cracks. But all I'm saying is, is I, I don't understand what the issue is here. Why does it have to come to conditional use? Just because somebody complained? If he wouldn't have complained, I don't think we'd be here tonight. I don't think this would ever even been brought up. So, I mean, the issues with, I just don't understand it. And all these kids you see sitting back here, that's the ones that's, that's suffering from this. You know, I see all these little kids back here, they all riding motorcycles. And you're saying, "You can't ride on grandpa's land?" I mean, what, what's that saying to people, guys? I just, I think we're, as Mr. Lance White said, we're, we're getting a little bit into people's, too personal with people, and, and I, like I said, I know Richard Moll at Brushy Mountain, I know he's probably got millions invested, but hey, man, we got fifty-two acres. How much can go on on fifty-two acres of land? And the drinking and, and partying, whatever that he says is gonna come, it ain't came since nineteen ninety-four. I moved here in ninety, nineteen ninety. Been riding over there for that many years. Nothing's changed. Not a thing has changed. Like I said, if Richard Moll wouldn't have pitched his fit, we'd never be here right now.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else like to speak?
My name is Vaughn Stards. I'm from Hickory. And I'm just a friend of Jimmy's. I'm no family member or nothing. I just, he just allows us to ride over there. I'm, I'm a member of that North Carolina, Hair Scramble. And, and that organization, uh, there's a decibel limit on mufflers and stuff, so why would we wanna change our mufflers to go ride on his when we go back over there? It's just not gonna happen. You know, he's respectful. He, he, he talks to us, you know, he said, "Be respectful of land and anywhere around. Just ride where we tell you to, nowhere else." And it's, it's just a, a place that a bunch of friends can get together and, and do what we love to do.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Come on up.
I have one more, then I'll, I'll be the, I'll leave. Uh, there's been a whole lot of things that's been said here tonight. Wish, I wish it could be different, but because there's, there's different viewpoints and different wants and wishes for everybody's own property, there's things that come up. And I would like for the people that's Jimmy's family to raise your hand.
Proudly raise my hand.
Proud. Okay, the rest of you are not family. When this started, it was Jimmy and his family. There's not very many now that's not coming, that is not family. And if this thing opens up further, it's just gonna get bigger. Nobody has a complaint about what you're doing. Nobody does. But the fear, the fear that everybody has, that I have talked to, that's not here, is how far will it go? How far will it go?
Can I say one more thing about that question?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. White asked a question, and I'd like to ask Mr. Terry White a question. Has your sons brought friends over to ride?
I think that pretty much answers it, so.
Let's keep everything cordial.
We, we will keep it cordial, but I don't like when someone calls somebody else out. I can, I can vouch for anybody in here, and I think most people in here could agree with the fact that Mr. Terry White does not necessarily get along with, with some people. But, um, he, his own sons have brought friends to come over and ride on that land, so.
Okay, thank you. Uh, does anyone else like to speak? Let's, uh, wrap this up.
My name's, uh, Chad Alexander. I'm a friend of Jimmy White's. Uh, I'd just like to thank you for letting us come over and doing what you're doing. I've got a nineteen-year-old son, enjoys riding motorcycles. He's, he's a very good kid, and I just wondered what it'd be like, you know, if he didn't have motorcycles to turn to. Uh, I know it kept me out of a lot of trouble if I'd have had something like that, but, uh, as far as the mud, Mr. Robertson, um, Jimmy will not, if it rains, if it's bad weather, we don't go over and ride, because as much as I like motorcycles and like to tell you they don't hurt land, i- if it rains real muddy, you don't want forty motorcycles or ten or whatever running around your land. It just makes a mess. So, the mud on the road's not gonna be a concern. I think the muffler issue's been settled. But, uh-
I do have a question about that.
Okay.
Uh, one of the previous gentlemen talked about the DB levels that-
Yes, sir.
Those mufflers were set to?
Yes, sir.
What is that DB level?
Uh, ninety-eight, ninety-eight decibels. And, okay.
Seth, that's something we may wanna address.
You can add that as a condition also?
Yeah.
I work, I work nights. I own twenty-one acres over off Cheatham Ford Road, Alexander County. My son has friends over often. They ride, I mean, twenty-one acres of land's not over. They ride at the house. I sleep right through it. It's the noise level. Won't, like you said, once it gets in the woods, you wonder if they're still riding or not. I, I guess that's it. I just, uh, I, I agree with, uh, Lance. Is that right? Uh, it's a shame we're having to be here. Uh, I, I agree with him. The only reason we're here is from Brushy Mountain Motorsports Park, or Todd maybe said that. There's not many people that will let you ride on their land anymore. Jimmy's been awful good to do that. I own twenty-one acres. We have friends over all the time. It's just me and my son that ride, in my family. And, you know, I would hate for somebody to come up to me and say, "My son Scotty, you can't have your friends over to ride on. You can ride on that land, but none of your friends can come." Anyway, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Seth, would you come back up? I've got another question for you. Okay, I'll get you in just a second. The surrounding properties, where are residences located at?
On the Childers property.
Childers property?
Yes, sir.
And-
And one that's not labeled, uh, the right-of-way coming straight across from Pine Grove Road, there is a single live manufactured home to the ri- of that right-of-way.
Okay.
Pretty good distance.
Have you heard anything from those two property owners?
From the property owner that is not labeled, yes.
Okay.
Concerns about parking, uh, driving through the, the fields there and that sort of thing.
Okay, all right, thank you. Come on up. Oh, uh, not, not you, Chad. Let him go first, please.
My name is Kyle Sutra. I'm an Alexander County resident and a friend of Jimmy's, and I'll keep this short and sweet, 'cause I get nervous talking in front of a lot of people. But that man right there loves kids. I got an eight-year-old and an eleven-year-old. That land is the only place they'll go ride, because he would rather see children there than big bikes. My kids feel safe there. That's the only place in the county they will ride. He, I just want y'all to keep that in mind. It's, it's a kid-friendly place. It's not us grown-ups out there raising cane, fussing, cussing. They think of him almost like a grandpa. I mean, they, they love going out there. The man loves kids. And it's, we, we need to keep the children in mind.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know whether y'all realize or not, Taylorville is kind of the center, it's kind of a center for motorcycles. I mean, there's, we got Daniels Ridge, we got Brushy Mountain Motorsports Park, we got Mr. White's place. I mean, there's, uh, Flat Rock's got a Hair Scramble, you know, County Line. There's a lot of motorcycle activities around here, and it brings a lot of revenue to the county. And, uh, I'd like to ask all y'all to support our sport and, uh, and welcome the revenue that it brings in. I'd like for y'all to, to, uh, look at that aspect and that side of it, too. I mean, it's like West Virginia. You know, you can legally ride a dirt bike or a four-wheeler without a tag on right down Main Street. And it's because they're catering, you know, West Virginia is catering to motorcycles and four-wheelers in the aspect that it's gonna bring them revenue, and it's brought them a lot. So, that might be something y'all can look at, too.
Okay, thank you.
A lot of people that comes to NCH, NCHSA, scrambling and stuff, I mean, they're like, how many people? Mr. White?
Three or four hundred, yeah.
Now, that's what- what Mr. White said, though, this is different from that. This is family and friends. This is not a sanction event, so it's not a, you don't even charge it admission, other than if somebody wants to donate something. Was that correct?
That's right, sir.
That's the note I wrote down.
But the people that come are members of the North Carolina Hair Scramble Association.
I understand that, but it's not a sanction event.
You're right.
Yeah.
I'd like to ask all y'all to support all motorcycle in the county, because it'll bring revenue.
All right. Uh, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously.
I know that the public hearing's closed, but I know it's up for discussion at this time, right?
Yeah, right.
If you don't mind, Seth, could you please tell me where this complaint came from on this property?
The allegations were correct. It came from Richard Moll, who owns Brushy Mountain Motorsports.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
The, um, and, and regardless of where it came from, we got to balance, you know, uh, we're, we're opening this up to sanctioned, sanctioned events, uh, eight of them a year. Um, I grew up on a motorcycle, started riding a motorcycle when I was four years old. So, uh, I know the importance of having a place to ride. And, uh, you know, you've gotta have places for these kids to go. There's, there's fewer, uh, much fewer places that, uh, they can ride now. I don't have a problem with this, with a few, uh, additional items put on for, um, the conditions. And, um, I'll, I'll read through these, and you guys think about them, but, uh, I think we need to add, uh, that Mr. White needs to put a sign out seven days before a race that says, uh, he's gonna have a race this Saturday or Sunday. The inspections be allowed at any time to ensure compliance with local, state, or federal regulations. That any of the trails that cross onto other people's properties be closed, and signs put up saying private property. And Mr. White, I hope you'd pay for that. And that item number 11, natural buffers between adjacent properties shall be maintained. And those are my thoughts.
I've changed my opinion a little bit during the hearing tonight. I've got more respect for what you're trying to do, Mr. White. I think the information we have is probably a little preliminary. I agree with the things you have noted there, Ryan, but I also think we need a draft, an outline, of the membership organization, what the rules are and what people are going to do, how people are going to be accepted into the membership. From the comments that were made, I think, from what I've heard anyway, it's mostly family and close friends. And we need to get that established on who is going to be controlling what goes on. I think you're still going to be the boss since you own the land, but it needs to be, and it's not just for us, but it's also for your protection. Also, I think it would be advisable for us and for you, too, since there have been complaints, I would suggest that the Division Environment Natural Resources that covers this area is in Mooresville, and we have people that can get in touch with them. But I think it would be...if we were out back talking, I'd say it'd be smart to get somebody to look at, because if there's been a complaint made because of what's going on, it won't stop just with a conditional use permit. And I think it would be very advisable to make sure everything's in compliance, so you don't get something started and then have to back up and fix something that could probably be handled now without a big to do. Another thing that in the membership organization draft, be sure to put some time and effort into that as far as liability. I heard the word said, and I heard that, you know, that's standard with, but if you have somebody that comes out there, and if it's family and close friends, they're going to be more honest with you. But if you have somebody that comes out there and they sign a form, and they get hurt, severely hurt, and they don't have insurance, attorneys will volunteer to crawl on that and for your protection as well as other people. That needs to be looked at, I think, before we get so far that you got to back up and redo things. And those are my concerns, and my thought was to make a motion to table this until these concerns could be addressed, then take a look at it, because I know how enthusiastic you'd be about redoing this, but at the same time, if we're going to do it, let's do it right for your benefit and protection as well as the county's. And I'll not make a motion until other commissioners have a chance to make their comments.
The comments that have been made so far, I would echo the comments that Chairman Mayberry said and Commissioner Robertson said. The other one that I have a concern with is the noise level. I'm not taking sides if there is a DB level that's associated with the mufflers. That needs to be incorporated in the regulations of this park. But I would also say that I'm more prone to table this until we can tighten up the rules and regulations and make sure that Dean is involved. I'm not saying that I'm against it. I just think, as Mr. Robertson said, that Mr. White, you need to do it right the first time. And that's...if we can get it right the first time, then I see no reason why I would be against it.
Let me say one thing before you...I don't really have a problem with having a motorcycle park. I think it's your land, you ought to be able to do what you want to with it. But when you're talking about the noise level and potential runoff from the streams, you're affecting your neighbors. So, we just need to make sure that that's not affecting the neighbors. And, you know, I just...we don't want to get too far into...well, let me say this. When we pass this conditional use permit, it's not for friends and family. This is a commercial conditional use. You can have eight events a year with up to 40 participants. It's not having kids out on the weekend. So, that's our concerns. We know that, you know, you're going to have friends and family out, but once that conditional use is passed, five years down the road, you may change your mind. You may want to hold, you know, huge events with just 40 participants, but still, it changes the use of the property. So, we've got to look at all possibilities. Anyone else?
And I'm in agreement with the other commissioners. It needs to be sort of fine-tuned to protect you. And believe me, I'm in favor of what you're doing because I've been there. I've got a bunch of kids, and they all own motorcycles. And I live across the road from Meadow Brook Saddle Club, and this weekend, they had an event, and there was no sleeping until they were gone either. But, you know, that's life. As far as the noise goes to me, if...that's not a problem. And...but we just need some...we just need to get you to fine-tune it, and like Darrell said, look after your interests also.
I don't...
So, I would make a motion at this time that we table this until these things have been cleared up.
I second it.
Or made more clear.
I second that motion.
I've got a question I'd like to ask. I know we're beyond public comment, but Mr. White, do you have any questions or comments as far as the items we've mentioned? From my viewpoint, it's not so much it protects you as well as it protects the county.
Sir, the only thing, if I fine-tune this to a form that suits you, then I coordinate with Mr. Harris. Is that who I go to?
Go through Seth, but if we need to talk about it, if you have a draft of your organization, anything you want to look at to see what we think, get it to Seth, and he can get it to us. We'll get your comments back because we don't want to waste your time either. And it'd be better for us to talk about it before another meeting than to go through this process again and say, "Well, you need to put a sentence in here," or something like that. So, if you'll get it to Seth, he'll get it to us.
Sir, the reason I say that is because actually the membership deal was kind of used to me. All I wanted was just family and friends and have these fun days. And I assume you say, "Fun days." There is no racing going on. Never has been, never will be, not as long as I own the property.
And if...
It's just a big family of friends.
And if you want to say that in your membership, that'd be perfect. It shall be me through second cousins and friends that my wife approves of or however, but I'm not trying to...the better it can be defined, the better it'll protect you, and the better it'll help if other complaints come up.
See, the reason I...and I understand where you're coming from, okay? I really do. And I know you're looking after my interests as well as the county's, okay? The deal was, I already had put up $350 to get this meeting, and that's probably as much as I make in a year in donations. So, any other cost I'm involved is definitely going to come out of my pocket. And I'll mention the upkeep I already do and have done for the last 19 years. So, I mean...
As far...and as far as the permit fee, that's the same. That's done if it's tabled. That doesn't change.
But I'm saying, I've got to...I'd probably have to hire a lawyer now to make sure this thing is going to be drafted correctly.
You might...
It would be in your best interest.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Let's talk about that after the meeting because you might be able to find a copy somewhere. Let's...
How did this thing get to be a membership thing to start with? And there's just a bunch of people out there riding motorcycles on your property. I don't mean to be rude or ugly or disrespectful to anybody, but I'm going to tell you, guys, you know, I mean... You know, I don't know what to say to accept it. This just really absolutely bothers me. I spent an hour of my life here listening to this, and I really see no reason we should have been doing this to start with. And, you know, but whenever you're doing things, remember one thing, you know, you do it, and you do it, and you do it until somebody complains, and then you have to meet the regulations. I hate that it's happened. I really do. Because, you know, I don't want anybody riding motorcycles on my property because I'm telling you now, they'd get killed because it's got too many rocks. But, you know, I hate it's come to this. I really do. But Jimmy, you don't have any choice now except to try to survive in some way, to have bylaws and rules and regulations to go by to ride because it's going to continue. It's not going to stop. And because people feel like they had to adhere to the rules and regulations that we've placed upon them years ago. I wasn't involved in that, but you don't have a choice, you know? And I hate it, guys. I really do. I really do. I understand where you're coming from, and I respect you, and my sympathy's with you and everything, but there just comes a time, and I hate it. But ride your motorcycles, kids. Enjoy them, you know? Every chance you get, ride your motorcycle, stay off the highway, keep your helmet on, be safe.
I think we all feel the same way about what Mr. Yoder just said, so let's just step back and punt this one for now.
Question. Time to vote. Call for the vote.
Make the motion.
We're waiting on you now, Chief.
Say it. Okay, is there any discussion? No more? Those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay, thank you. Motion passes unanimously. We will table the motion, then...
If you need anything, give me a call.
Mr. Chairman, I need to be excused for this.
Please.
Okay. We will move on to item number four on the agenda tonight, which is Resolution in Support of Senate Bill 433. Don't everybody leave? And I will read this resolution if you want to stay and hear it. Resolution in Support of Senate Bill 433. Whereas the membership of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners adopted a legislative goal to allow county flexibility to organize local human services so counties can offer a more streamlined and efficient government to minimize administrative costs and maximize services for citizens. And whereas North Carolina county governments are responsible for administering social services and community health programs with county employees, and whereas counties cover more than $500 million per year on DSS administrative costs while state dollars cover less than 3% of these costs, and whereas a study commissioned by the General Assembly recommended that counties be given flexibility in determining how to organize their local human services delivery programs, and whereas Senate Bill 433 would provide all counties with the option to determine locally how best they can provide human services to their citizens, and whereas Senate Bill 433 overwhelmingly passed the Senate in 2011 with a majority of senators in both parties in support. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Alexander County Board of Commissioners adopts this resolution in support of Senate Bill 433 to allow county flexibility to organize local human services. Further, be it resolved that copies of this resolution be transmitted to the members of the General Assembly representing Alexander County to let them know of our support for this issue, adopted this fourth day of June 2012. I'll make that in form of a motion.
I make a motion. We approve this resolution.
And I second it.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously.
You didn't give me a chance to comment on the discussion period.
You go right ahead.
I talked to Representative Hollow, and of course, it says in the resolution that we should send him copies, but he requested a copy as soon as possible.
Okay.
I think he knows that we're supportive.
Yes, he does.
He is.
Yes, he does.
And the thing about this also that I'd like to say, it's not necessarily the fact that Alexander County is going to do this. It's just the fact they can hear me. Trust me. You can't hear me, you've got a hearing problem. But it's the fact that it gives us a flexibility to be able to do that. All we're asking for is a flexibility. Our Health Department and our Social Services do an outstanding job, and I don't say that this will affect the way that we do the things that we do here in Alexander County. Because I can tell you all now that most of your Directors of Social Services and the Directors of the Health Departments and their associations are calling in opposition to this bill.
Yes.
So, you know, just so that you'll know that and know what's going on, but I think it's good to give the commissioners the flexibility to do what needs to be done.
Any other comments? Okay, item five on the agenda, sales tax report. I call on Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sales tax report is in your packet. This month, we collected $348,765 in sales taxes. So far this year, in Article 39, we've collected $1,287,000 of $1,561,200, which is over 82%. We've collected 1.1 million of $1,369,000, which is over 80%. And for Article 46, we've collected over 87%. We've collected $285,000 of $327,300. We have three more months to go. If you look at the budget sort of in the comparison from last year's budget and this year's budget, we're $261,848 ahead or 10.79%, but have to say that $80,000 of that will go towards the schools, towards the hold harmless, but we're still ahead, and that's a good sign. And I'll be glad to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Do anyone have any questions?
Mr. French, one thing that I'd like to point out here is our Article 46 quarter-cent sales tax. You know, it's up, which is real good because we said, you know, whenever we did this and we asked a citizen of this county to support that quarter-cent sales tax under Article 44... excuse me, 46.
46.
When we asked them to do that, we said that we'd use that money for capital improvements, and...
That's correct.
And that's going to be...that's going to be a tremendous asset to us in offsetting the debt service costs to our county jail...
Yes, sir.
And our facilities. And with everybody paying this quarter-cent sales tax, this has really helped us that there'll be no tax increase. It's been a tremendous asset for us. And thank you, citizens, for voting for that.
Mr. Commissioner Yoder, I'd like to emphasize that again. We are not proposing in this budget for 2012, 2013. Mr. French has already said it, and Mr. Yoder's already said it, any property tax increase.
Absolutely not. No.
So, I want everybody that's listening and watching to hear that clearly.
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to item number six. That has been tabled, so we will skip and go to item number seven, Budget Ordinance Amendments, Number 45 and Number 46. Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two budget amendments. 45 is to adjust senior center budget to reflect the 25% local match required for the general purpose grant funds to increase appropriation to CBCC Alexander Center for recruitment and advising specialist position, and to increase the Board of Education...I'm sorry, Board of Elections Continuancy Line item for estimate of funds available from the Help America Vote Act grant. If funds are awarded, the grant will reimburse the Board of Elections for the cost of election coding for the May 8th primary election. Number 46 is to adjust the budget estimate for sales tax hold harmless funds to the school system based on year-to-date receipts, and to budget for transfer to school capital improvements fund based on fiscal year 2011 school sales tax revenue in excess of fiscal year 2011 school debt service payments.
I move to approve.
Got a motion? Did I hear a second?
Yes.
Okay, a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Okay, item eight on the agenda, County Manager's Report. Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things to mention. One is just... One is just as we all are aware, Rocky Face Mountain Recreational Park opened May 25th. And it's been well received by the public. You have your numbers. We've had three hundred and eighty-nine folks visit during the first four days. And that's during some pretty hot weather, so we're hoping those will pick up in the, certainly pick up in the fall, but we've had some cool days, so the numbers are, are doing well. And also, there's a welcome reception scheduled for Tuesday, June 12th, for the new superintendent of Alexander County Schools, Dr. M. Brock Womble. And the reception is from 3:30 until 5:00 PM at the Alexander High School auditorium lobby.
I'll make one comment about the park. We've not even had a real grand opening yet. And as far as I know, the only advertising that we've done has been in the Taylorville Times and the website, is that correct?
No, he's, they've sent notices out to all the surrounding newspapers in the other counties.
Put some out, alright.
I make a comment about Rocky Face Park. Everybody knows what a beautiful day it was, Saturday, decided to ride out there. And it was, matter of fact, it was before 10 o'clock Saturday morning. And already forty people had been out there to walk the trails and hike the mountain and so forth. I asked the park attendant, I wrote his name down. Just to tell you, Mr. French, what a fine job you did of hiring him. Jason Noble, it was his name. And I said, where's the best place to watch the sunset if I decide to go later on in the fall or in the summer? Of course, you could see up on top of the mountain, you could see some people sitting. He said, you see where those people are sitting? He said, that's where you need to sit. I would ask one question. Is there any opportunity to get any cushions up there and sit on those rocks?
If you carry one.
Your problem's going to be getting up there, not a cushion.
I appreciate that. But anyhow, it's, it's a beautiful piece of property. And I would encourage everybody to go out there if you haven't been out there yet. And Judy, I appreciate that too.
And, and it is, and one of the pictures on the website is moonshine at Rocky Face. It disappointed me when I went to the picture though.
It wasn't the drinking kind of what you're talking about.
It was beautiful moonshine.
Yeah.
The moon was full. I'm glad we're Saturday days.
Alright. We'll move on to item number eight. On the agenda?
Seven A, seven A.
No, we named it eight A, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Eight, eight A's on you too.
Eight A, surplus items from Sheriff's Department, calling Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Received a letter from Sheriff Bowman requesting from the Commissioner surplusing some current service weapons. And as our policy, the board declares those surplus. And like to recommend you forward that.
And when you declare them surplus, you're saying you'd like for the Sheriff's Department to sell those?
Yes, sir.
And that money will go back into the weapons fund?
That's correct.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, is there any discussion? Why, let me ask one question about that. Why are all the service weapons being surplus?
Mr. Chairman, I can comment on that if you, if you'd like. I asked Sheriff Bowman that exact question. A lot of these weapons are defective.
Okay.
The firing pins and firing mechanisms are not working correctly.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, it might be a good idea to have a list of the weapons that are being included in this, attached to this motion, just for future reference.
With serial numbers?
Yes, sir.
Would you take that as a amendment to your motion? Okay. Got a motion in a second with amendment. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is a consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, is there any discussion? Being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Okay, we do need to have a quick closed session per North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11 to prevent the disclosure of confidential information, economic development, contractual, and personnel. And I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, is there any discussion? Being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Alright, thank you very much.